Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Greckin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Janer.
Can we stand for a moment a silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Moore has something he would like to do before we get started.
Mayor and City Council, I've invited Mayor John Winkle from Sergeant Bluff to be here today, and he gracefully accepted. And then our Executive Director of Simco, Michelle Boston Ellis, is also with us. We'd like to make a couple of presentations, if we may. Last week, Simco had its annual meeting, and a couple of people were missing. One was there, one was missing, so we're going to kind of catch up with that. So, Mayor?
Thank you very much.
Welcome to Sioux City, Iowa.
Yeah.
Our great neighbor to the north, no doubt, and I mean that. So, I'm not here as mayor today. I'm here as the Chair of Simco, and that's a job, basically, first of all, that Dan Moore lets me have. And really, Dan and I function 99% like co-chairs, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. He's one of the greatest assets we have in Simco. Now, I want to say, how much money do any of you here think that Simco handles, arranges, gets grants for the five counties in Iowa, and then Nebraska and South Dakota, one county each, seven counties? How much money do you think we touch and bring into this area this year?
I'll say $300 million.
Boy, you're pretty close. So, it's not quite that good, Pete, but it is $221,280,000. Now, we're sneaking up on a billion, one-fourth of a billion dollars there. And that takes a fantastic staff, and we have that staff. And we haven't had, we've been blessed to keep that staff largely to Michelle's efforts. So, we're going to kind of hand this back and forth because we have three awards to hand out, and it wouldn't be possible without the support of each of you council people and Mayor Bob.
I was just trying to figure out how much you had to throw in the pot to get to a quarter of a billion, that's all.
Hey, baby. Thank you, Bob. Thank you. And I want to thank Bob Padmore, who's on our board and works tirelessly for us as well. So, we have three awards to get through, so I'm going to have Michelle help me a little bit by giving you the description of the Ron Rapp Award.
All right. Yeah. So, let me get back here. So, some of this is from our annual meeting, as Dan mentioned, so I'm going to just kind of read what was presented here. So, one award that we give, a distinguished award, is the Ron Rapp Award in memory of Ron Rapp, and hopefully you know Ron Rapp. If you don't, he worked over in South Sioux City, was on the planning and zoning for a long time, and an active member of the Simco Board of Directors. So, in memory of Ron Rapp, the Simco Board of Directors approve establishing an award to honor the longstanding members who have served on the Board of Directors who have supported the organization. Typically, the award is nominated by the Finance Executive Committee. However, this year was a bit different because without the winner's knowledge, the Finance Executive Committee nominated two worthy candidates, and the staff was called in to break the tie, although it was determined that the two are truly a team and lead the Simco organization as such. Therefore, this year, we presented the Ron Rapp Award to both John Winkle and Dan Moore, and I think they want to... Yes. Yes, and they both want to say...
So, I said a few good things about the gentleman on my right, and generally, I think of people who have mentored me in some way in my life as being older. And I think he's 68 and I'm 74, but he still falls in that category. Did I get the age close? Okay. So, he has helped me in a lot of ways become a better person on behalf of Simco, and I truly mean that. And presenting you the Ron Rapp Award, I want to congratulate you and thank you so very, very much, as we pretty much set a record this year for the funds we handled. Yes, we did. Thank you.
Now, it's my turn. Stay right up here.
Okay.
And yes, John has done an excellent job being Chair of Simco. He shows great leadership. He shows great leadership, and he really has a grasp of financial situations that we really need, and you've really, you've done a good job leading us in that. Of course, I introduce him as Mayor John Winkle because he is Mayor of Sergeant Bluff, and I've got a great deal of respect for John. He's also the Chair of Simco. So, we do really click. We hum. The only thing we're trying to figure out now, though, John, is how did Michelle do that award nomination without our knowing it?
Yeah, well, it was obviously a breakdown in communication.
There are a lot of things you don't know about.
You kept it, oh, yeah. They kept it a good secret, but I'll tell you, we're serving on these boards and committees, as all the council members have done, and the mayor has done for a number of years, and it's a lot more enjoyable when you have someone that you work with and you have a great deal of respect for as far as their leadership skills. And John Winkle is one of the best I've ever worked with. So, thank you, John. Appreciate it.
What do I owe you?
And congratulations, a quarter of them.
Thank you.
Okay, Michelle.
Now, Michelle's got two other awards to give city employees. Don't go away. Well, we might get a picture later.
Okay. Yeah, we do need to get a picture.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Yes. All right. What one should I do first here, in reference? Okay. All right, we had another couple of award winners of city staff. One was not present, so this is the first that he has heard about this. We gave, let me see here, I'm going to flip over my sheet here. Okay, one award was the Community Leader Award. Community Leaders' Award recognized those individuals for their roles as community leaders. Nominated by the Simco staff, recipients of this award demonstrate a positive impact in their community, leadership qualities, and serve as a role model for their community. They show concern for and promote the welfare of their community, have contributed to a cause, or have been an advocate for a need in their community. We had three award winners this year, and one of those award winners was Matt Salvatore. Let me read some more about it. As you know, Matt became Parks and Recreation Director for Sioux City in August 2014, and that seven-year timeframe, Matt has led the city of Sioux City in improving parks and recreation opportunities, not only for the city residents, but for the region. As you all know, quality of life amenities such as park and recreation are imperative to the success of communities and our region. Matt has taken Sioux City and the region to the next level. The number of projects that Matt has worked on during that time is plentiful, and I even tried to list them all, and I'm sure I missed many. But projects that stick out to me include the completion of the Expo Center, Pearl Street Park in downtown, our first winter park, Cone Park, and many trail projects, including riverfront trail completion, Riverside Trail Connections, Clark School Connection, Floyd and Hour Drive Connections. Matt has even more projects and works in the work, including the riverfront park improvements, mountain bike trails, connecting Iowa to South Dakota By Trail, and the Railroad Museum Trail and Big Sioux Campgrounds. Matt makes himself available not only to the city staff and council, but also to Simco staff, to neighboring communities, and to the general public. Matt has a vision and a drive which is hard to match. Simco would like to recognize Matt Salvatore as a community leader. Thank you, Matt.
All right. Congratulations.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Okay, okay. Sounds good. Well, we'll grab that.
Right here.
All right, sure. Okay, Matt.
We'll get him in between us. I don't want to be able to give away. By the way, we work with him a lot, Sergeant Bluff, who's coordinating our trails. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
And here, I'll give you the box. Here's the box. All right. So, one more award, and I appreciate you letting us do that day at the meeting. So, this award was presented last week, but just wanted to present it again so that you were all aware. So, I'm going to have Dave Carney come on up. The next award was Outstanding Support. Outstanding Support recognized individuals who have made a unique and exceptional contribution to Simco. Nominated by the Simco staff, recipients of this award demonstrate commitment, leadership, and dedication to the organization. Dave was one of three winners of this award. Hopefully, you know, Dave currently serves as the Chair of the MPO Transportation Technical Committee. Through Dave's current position as Public Works Director for Sioux City and his previous role as the County Engineer in Monona County, Dave has been a great partner and supporter of the Simco organization. Dave has worked closely with Simco staff on bicycle pedestrian issues, programming of roads and bridge projects, and special projects. Dave is always available to Simco staff for questions and support when he leads the MPO Technical Committee. Simco would like to recognize Dave Carney for his outstanding support to the organization. We gave him a star for good work. Do you want to do another picture?
Okay. Congratulations. Thank you, John.
Sorry for making you a little late. Thank you, Sioux City.
Thanks, John.
Okay. Next, we will go to interviews for boards and commissions. Civil Service Commission, Ike Rayford. Ike, are you here?
Yep.
There you are. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the Civil Service Commission.
Thank you. Thank you for this time, to each one of you. Ike Rayford, originally from Dallas, Texas, but have been a Sioux Cityan for probably the last 30 years. I guess I just want to serve on the service, civil service, because I like to serve, and I want to be of service to this community in whatever way that I can. I feel like I just want to give back to what's been given to me, and I just look for the opportunity to do that.
Sounds good. Thanks, Ike. Appreciate your willingness.
No. Got to learn a lot about Ike through the last election process, and I think you do a great job.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Ike.
Thank you, Ike. Appreciate it.
Making the application. We'll be in, yeah, we'll be in touch.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next is Events, Facilities, and Term Advisory Board, Julie Enixson. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Good afternoon. I'm Julie Enixson, and I'm the President of Rosecrans Jackson Centers, the Iowa region here. And I want to serve on this board. Actually, Barbara Slonaker reached out to me and said, you know, we go to a lot of events together and things like that in Sioux City, and you've been, you know, you enjoy going as much as I do to these things, and I think you'd be a great asset to it. I've been in Sioux City for 30 years. I'm originally from Cushing, the farming community, just 40 miles east of here, and Sioux City's been my home, and I just love going to all the events that we have here and support those, and I think I can contribute to bring other events into the community and help along with that, so.
Well, Julie, I have a question for you. I've known you for a long time.
Yes.
And I'm really pleased that you did file an application. Just briefly, something near and dear to my heart, Rosecrans Jackson Recovery in Sioux City and all the good that they do. Can you just give a brief summary?
Absolutely.
Of what they do, please?
Yes, absolutely. Rosecrans Jackson Center is the largest addiction treatment provider in the state of Iowa. We've served over 9,400 clients throughout the state of Iowa. We've served clients from 90% of the counties, so almost 90 counties in the state we've served clients from. We do outpatient treatment. We do detox. We do, we have a stabilization unit. It's a 12-bed unit. It's for those kids with mental health issues about harming others or harming themselves. We've had that program open now for over six years. It's been a great asset to the community. We brought it to the community because it was something the community was missing. We have 13 locations. We're just acquiring a location in Davenport, Iowa, so we'll be on Riverbed to Riverbed, is what I call it. So, the Mississippi to the Missouri, we'll be serving clients, and that's our objective, is to grow, because the addiction is growing, especially with the pandemic. And so, we're looking at growing our services to provide more care to those that are struggling from addiction. So, we've been around since 1976. We affiliated with Rosecrans January 1 of 2019, which has been a great partner with us, gives us a bigger footprint in the market and in helping those. They're one of the largest treatment programs in Illinois, so they have been a great resource for us.
Yeah, I really appreciate Rosecrans Jackson does for our community. And in October, and I attended this meeting, the Mayor's Youth Commission had a little exercise done by a couple of people that came from Rosecrans Jackson, and I think the ones that were there, and I found it really interesting, all the things you can lose to addictions, and it was hard to give things up, but it was a good exercise. So, I was glad to see that they're tying in with the Mayor's Youth Commission because we have a very active Mayor's Youth Commission. They're very dedicated to issues such as recovery and making sure this is a better and safer community to live in.
Yes. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie, thank you for applying. Really appreciate you taking the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Skaggs.
I'm Mike Skaggs. I've lived in Sioux City for 35 years. I've been the Co-Tournament Director for the NAIA Volleyball and Basketball Championships here in Sioux City. For, we just finished, I just finished my 36 championship between the two, so we've, with the help of and support of the council, the city, a large group of volunteers, we've made Sioux City a destination for NAIA athletes every year. They start their year out with a sign in their locker room that says Sioux City or Bust, or something along those lines. So, it's just been great, and I'd like to serve on this to expand on what we've been able to do with that and see what else we can do to bring great things to the city.
Mike, you've done a fabulous job showcasing Sioux City.
Thank you.
With those tournaments that we have, and we just get so much out of those, so much mileage for Sioux City.
Thank you very much.
For the good of Sioux City.
How many basketball tournaments, how many volleyball tournaments make the 36?
24 basketball and 12 volleyball.
Well, that's terrific. You think you have enough experience to handle this job?
It'll be close.
I think you'll do just fine, Mike.
I've got the mayor, you know, at every tournament on the sidelines there to instill wisdom and share wisdom with, so.
And you still want the job?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
They still take my check.
Sometimes at the last minute, but we still take it, yes.
You'll do great. Thank you for applying.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Mike.
Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Sarah Weedenfeld. I might not have your name right if I don't. I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Sarah Weedenfeld.
Weedenfeld, okay.
Yeah, that's all right.
Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. So, I live in Sioux City.
Can I pull your mic down a little bit, please? There you go.
All right.
Perfect. Thank you.
Been in Sioux City about 14 years. I work at the Family Medicine Residency. It's a medical education foundation. I'm a faculty pharmacist there. So, the health and well-being of the citizens of Sioux City is incredibly important to me and what I focus most of my day on, in addition to attracting new young physicians to our community, which will hopefully stay and practice here, which Parks and Rec is a big attraction that they're looking for. In addition to my personal life, I am pretty active and cycle and use our parks as well. I've served on the Parks and Rec Board the past three years, serving as president the last two years, and I think we have a lot of really exciting projects in the works, and I'm hoping to continue my work and see some of those things come to be.
Perfect. Appreciate you wanting to continue to serve.
Thanks for your past service. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, thank you. Senior Advisory Committee, Cheryl Prather. Good to see you want to get back out of the house and get going. You've been kind of sitting around too much, Cheryl. We need to get you active.
I'm Cheryl Prather, and I've lived here all my life. And up until the last four years, I was always involved in a lot of children's activities and encouraging in that area. And now that I'm a senior myself, and this committee just started, I was interested in it and wanted to see what we could do for our seniors. And I'm one of, I think I'm the last original member of the board to be.
I think you are.
For a term to rotate off. And I've learned a lot about the city and met a lot of the city people, and it's been real enlightening. And I feel, we found that really there's a lot for the seniors in this city, and I think our biggest concern is how to get the word out to them, so they know what's available to them. And we work on that. We did a survey, quite a large survey, and got a lot of feedback there and been working on parts of that. The main thing is transportation and housing for our seniors. So, I just think I'd like to continue working on that.
You'd wonder how effective, more effective you might have been than you have been had COVID not hit. That's the unfortunate part about your committee, because I think you would have made a lot more inroads than what you have.
We kind of got off track a little bit.
But it's not for lack of effort on the part of your committee, that's for sure. Thank you for continuing to want to serve. Appreciate it.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go to the regular agenda, which today, the consent agenda is Items 3 through 13F. Consider those items passed unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, come up as I read it. State your name and address for the record. If you want to speak on an item not under the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three, are the reading of the City Council minutes of December 6, 2021.
Mayor?
Yes.
Lisa, did you make that revision?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Thank you.
Four is the Mayor's Youth Commission 2021 accomplishments. Mary, who's going to, somebody going to go over that, or we, I know we have it, but do you want to say anything? Yeah. Are you ready?
My name is Mary Coaster, and I am the Youth Services Coordinator for Suland Cares. I work with the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission and the Sioux City Young Ambassadors. I have a group of high school students that would like to, that would like to present to you what we have accomplished during the year of 2021. And they're going to line up behind me now.
Okay.
And then they're going to step up to the microphone and talk to you.
Very good. Always one of our favorite days in City Council.
Me, too. Good afternoon. My name is Estella Rur Johnson, and I'm a senior at East High School. I am the current mayor of Sioux City's Mayor's Youth Commission, and the members of the Executive Council would like to present MYC's 2021 accomplishments.
Okay, so first, we're going to start off with our mission. So, the mission of the Mayor's Youth Commission is to explore, communicate, and provide for the needs, problems, issues, and activities affecting the city's youth.
Next up, we have, sorry, next up, we have some goals for our youth to make a positive impact in their community and to feel valued, to encourage youth to develop into their full potential, to hold leadership sessions for youth to increase their knowledge and skills, and to participate in community service and activities, and to have the youth feel as they have made a positive contribution to society.
Hello, my name is Kayla Jobber, and I am a junior at Healan, and I serve currently as the Legal Director of MYC. And for all the members of Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission, we all have requirements. These are to earn 10 points each calendar year from January to December, where two hours equals one point. We have to follow the good conduct policy and must earn five points by May 31. And for Silver Court service hours, but these service hours cannot be counted for MYC activities until 10 points have been completed for the year.
Good afternoon. My name is Jackson Wagner, and I'm a junior at North High School. I currently serve as a Young Ambassador co-director. The Mayor's Youth Commission currently has 105 members and an additional 43 Young Ambassadors, bringing our total membership to 148. Members are from Bishop Healan High School, East High School, North High School, West High School, Sergeant Bluff Lutton, and Suland Community Christian.
Hello, my name is Emily Hodge. I serve as a Executive Council co-director of Young Ambassadors. And the 2021 impact, in January, the Executive Council members held an orientation for 50 new members. In February, we identified items for the 2021 Action Plan, which included mental health awareness, support for Noah Hopes or Suland Humane Society, to educate members on school board meetings, safe uses of social media, COVID-19 awareness, and Young Ambassador Little Free Library activities. And action plan topics were addressed in the programs for the year.
Hi, everyone. I'm Grace Hodge. I'm a sophomore at North High School, and I serve as the Young Ambassador co-director. For 2021 volunteering, in 2021, members contributed 2,325 volunteer hours to our community. MYC members volunteered at 33 different activities.
Hello, my name is Jake Wees, and I'm a senior at Bishop Healan. I'm also a hospitality co-director. Here are some 2021 ongoing volunteer activities. Mayor's Youth Committee, Mayor's Youth Commission members participate in ongoing activities, including maintaining 11 Little Free Libraries, collecting books for these libraries, disc golf cleanup, and City Council meeting attendance.
My name is Alexandra Kleinschmidt, and I'm currently a senior at Sioux City North High School. I also serve as the Administrative Services Director. So, some of the 2021 volunteer activities included Neighborhood Network Family Fun Night, Leave Women Voters School Board Forum, Random Acts of Kindness Day, Daddy Daughter Date Night, Cone Park All Abilities Day, the Suland District Health Program Information, Move Your Way 5K Stroller Walk, the Community Health Assessment, and the Environmental Advisory Board Re-Event.
Hello, my name is Isabel Martinez. I'm a senior at Bishop Healan. I'm just a member of the Executive Council. The 2021 volunteer activities also included installation of a new Little Free Library at Latham Park, Household Hazardous Material Collection, Neighborhood Network National Night Out, Grand View Park Movie Night, Young Ambassadors Press Conference, Young Ambassadors Nomination Process, and the Young Ambassador Ceremony.
Hi, my name is Ayla Nelson. I am currently a junior at Bishop Healan, and I currently serve as the Finance Director for Mayor's Youth Commission. Some additional 2021 volunteer activities we participated in were Suland Cares Whipple Ball Classic Fundraiser, Plant the Town Red with Tulip Bulb Fundraiser, Art Splash, Suland Big Give Video Recordings, Electronic Re-Event, Dance on the Diamond, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, Downtown for the Holidays, and the Downtown for the Holidays Lighted Parade.
Hey, my name is Joe Meyer, and I'm a senior at Healan. I currently hold the position of Hospitality co-director, and over the years, Mayor's Youth Commission has mentored the Sioux City Young Ambassadors. This is a recognition program for students through fourth and seventh grades who display exemplary character. All nominated students have received a free Young Ambassadors T-shirt, a gift certificate from book people provided by Mayor's Youth Commission, as well as public recognition. From the nominations, 20 students are selected to be mentored by members of the Mayor's, of the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission.
I'm Anna Erickson. I'm a senior at Bishop Healan, and I'm a Hospitality co-director. Right now, there are 21 members of the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission Executive Council, and these members have served one year on the Youth Commission or were previously a Young Ambassador. They have completed an application and interviewed for the position.
Hi, my name is Samantha Burke. I at a West High School, and I'm a Hospitality co-director. So, we're going to start off with the mayor, which is Estella Rur Johnson, and she goes to East High School. The Mayor pro tem is Jake McGowan from Bishop Healan High School. The Finance Director is Ayla Nelson from Bishop Healan High School. Legal Director is Kayla Jobber from Bishop Healan High School. The Administrative Services Director is Alexandra Kleinschmidt, Kleinschmidt from North High School. And then we also have the Young Ambassador co-directors, Adalay Gassaway from North High School, Emily Hodge from North High School, Grace Hodge from North High School, Lorena Peralis from East High School, Jackson Wagner from North High.
My name is Isabel Raveling. I'm a senior at North, and I am a project director. So, also, our Hospitality co-directors are Samantha Burke from West High School, Anna Erickson from Bishop Healan High School, Joseph Meyer from Bishop Healan High School, and Jacob Wees from Bishop Healan High School. And then our project directors are from Bishop Healan, Gabriela Garcia- And then our project directors are from Bishop Healan Gabriela Garcia and Isabel Martinez from East, Cindy Helt and Myanna Parker from North, Isabel Raveling from West, Iris Engelgard, and from Sergeant Bluff Luton, Henry Echoloff.
Hi, this is Kayla again. We also had adult advisors for MYC, and the twenty twenty-one adult advisors were N I East Adam from Siouxland District Health, Sergeant Terry Eifnerz, and Sergeant Jim Cunningham from Sioux City Police Department Liaison, Torian Kelly from Siouxland Cares Outreach and Data Assistant, Mary Coaster, the Siouxland Cares Youth Services Coordinator, Rachel Lundgren, Siouxland Cares Executive Director, Emmyuki Nelson, who is a parent volunteer.
The Sioux City's Mayor's Youth Commission would like to thank you for believing in our organization and giving us the opportunity to serve our community. We also invite you to attend and participate in any of our meetings and activities. I would like to open the floor to any questions y'all might have for MYC.
Not so much a question as observations, and I'm so glad Mayor John Winkle stayed for this portion of our meeting tonight. Because, John, I couldn't be prouder of the Mayor's Youth Commission. You are so active, you're so dedicated. And I know what it was like to be in high school. I know it was a long time ago. But, but all of the challenges that students have today, and all of the temptations, and everything that's going on in our world today. I am so proud of you for being dedicated to local government, city government, I think is one of the most important. As I was telling you before the meeting, you can, you can build on that. It's a solid foundation to build on. If you want to go to other places and soar high otherwise, you can do that because you'll have the ability, what you've learned and what you have put into practice at the city level. And you have been so active. I look at close to fifty activities you all participated in this year, and it's only November. And it's, it's just incredible. I can't say enough good things about you. And when I'm out and about in the community, I really sing your praises. And I, and I really mean it. It's very sincere, it's from the heart. And I just hope we can keep having this kind of activity, this kind of involvement from our youth in Sioux City and Sergeant Bluff. It's just, it's just really great. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
On behalf of MYC, thank you so much for allowing us to participate in the community. I think it's something that we all are really proud of and a mission that, you know, we can put on applications and really be proud of what we're doing. So thank you all. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, back when I was mayor a long time ago, this got revived, restarted. So I want to, first of all, thank all the adults that have come along and allowed the youth to actually control the organization. Years ago, the parents tried to control the organization, and it was, it was a miserable failure, quite frankly. So, but thank you for the leadership. And, you know, you look at your volunteer hours and the difference that makes in the community. I don't think you understand it when you only do five or ten yourself. But when you add that, all those hours together, it's a big impact on our community. So I haven't really accomplished a lot sitting in this chair, but one of the things is getting this revived will always be one of the bright spots of my tours of duty. So thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Now I have the honor to swear in our new mayor and mayor pro tem. Kayla Jobber? Please raise your right hand. Do you, Kayla Jobber, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, execute the position of the Office of Mayor of the Sioux City's Mayor's Youth Commission during the year twenty twenty-two, and to the best of your ability uphold, promote, and support the ideas, activities, and mission of the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission by serving as a positive role model, leader, and voice for what, MYC? If so, answer I do.
I do.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you, Ayla Nelson, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, execute the position of the Office of Mayor Pro Tem of the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission during the year twenty twenty-two, and to the best of your ability uphold, promote, and support the ideas, activities, and mission of the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission by serving as a positive role model, leader, and voice for MYC? Answer I do.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, number six is a resolution assessing a five hundred dollar civil penalty against Mott's Pizza and Ice Cream Parlor for violation of the beer, wine, and liquor laws.
Did we miss, do we need to do number five on appointing the new members?
Well, a resolution pointing new members to Mayor's Youth Commission. I'm sorry, we have, I have to do that.
Yes, please.
Yes.
Just two minutes.
Five is a resolution appointing new members to Mayor's Youth Commission. Okay.
Okay, every October, we ask for new members for our Mayor's Youth Commission. And this year, we have nineteen new members. Thirteen of them are male, and six of them are female. The ethnicity representative represented is one African American, fourteen Caucasian, one Caucasian African American, one Caucasian Pacific Islander, and two Latino Hispanic. The schools that are represented are Bishop Healan, East, North, and West. These nineteen new students will join the rest of the students come January first of twenty twenty-two, and they will serve on the Mayor's Youth Commission through December of their senior year. We would like you to approve these today.
They are approved.
And before we're done, we have one more thing that we want to talk about.
Well, let's do it. Give her the mic.
No doubt.
Be Somebody is a social norming campaign on good citizenship, role modeling, reducing bullying, and eliminating substance abuse. This initiative provides direction to youth and adults on how to make positive change. The Mayor's Youth Commission has been consistently involved in this program for the past decade. Beginning in two thousand and eleven, Suland Cares has annually recognized Suland organizations or individuals who display good citizenship and good character. I would like to invite Mr. Gretkin up. Today, we present the twenty twenty-one Be Somebody Award to Councilman Pete Gretkin for demonstrating outstanding efforts in supporting substance misuse reduction and bullying prevention in our community during his time on Suland Cares Advisory Board. On behalf of Suland Cares and Be Somebody Initiative, thank you, Pete, for the amazing accomplishments and for standing up and being somebody. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete.
Pete.
Much deserved. Good job, Pete.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Take care. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Seven is a resolution, resolution adopting plans and specs for the fire and rescue training tower project. Eight is a resolution authorizing a pre-construction agreement with IDOT for Gordon Drive Viadoc overlay project. And I got, I have to apologize, I didn't have a very good week. But is this for the actual Viadoc? Okay, because I don't want to, until they come up with final plans, I don't want us to be going into any kind of an agreement with them, right? I mean, what's this for?
Gordon Fair, City Engineer. This is for the overlay of actually Gordon Drive from about Fairmont over to Menards.
And so what is it doing? Just tell me what it's doing.
Just an overlay.
Okay.
And we're.
But, but something was mentioned in there about a conduit and that. I read it briefly. I just, I didn't have a very good time reading stuff today. My brain's not there. Okay, if that's all it is, that's fine. Okay, thank you. Actions relating to annual reports, items nine, eight, and nine C are motions approving the annual reports of the Art Center Board of Trustees, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Public Museum. Ten are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution approving small business grant program funding awards. B is a resolution authorizing the Fleetwood Department to accept the Bulletproof Vest Body Armor Initiative to purchase body armor. Eleven are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution paying, authorizing payment to Subserco for the water main replacement project. I need to abstain on that item, please. B is a resolution authorizing payment to Mark Alvinicious for the transit maintenance, garage parking lot repair project. C is a resolution approving partial settlement of a tort claim. Twelve, go ahead.
An eleven C, I need to abstain, conflict of interest.
Okay. Twelve is an application for beer liquor license. See the list come forth if you have questions. Thirteen, a receipt of minutes. See the list come forth if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes four to zero with Julie absent. Recommendations of Planning and Zoning, fourteens, a hearing and ordinance amending chapter twenty-five point zero seven. Definitions of the Municipal Code to amend the definition of animal boarding, and P and Z recommends approval. Anybody speaking on this one?
Jeff here?
Yes, my name is.
I'm sorry.
My name is Megan, and the Cat Cafe, which is going to be named Coffee and Purr's.
Just one second. The public hearing's now open now. You've stated your name. Can you give the address again, please?
Yes. My name is Megan Thompson, and the address of the Cat Cafe is going to be five twenty Nebraska Street under the Bluebird Flats.
Thank you, go ahead.
So the Cat Cafe is basically a place that client, or customers will be able to come into. They can either get their morning coffee coming down for work if they want to in the coffee shop area, or people can come in for either thirty minutes or an hour. We will have those two options, and they can purchase a ticket to sit in the cat room and cuddle with cats, basically. This idea is very popular in bigger cities such as Los Angeles, San Francisco, Norfolk, Virginia, Dallas, Texas, Chattanooga, Tennessee, Nashville, Tennessee, and more. There is also one in Omaha and Des Moines that I have both. Oh, I've been to the one in Omaha, and I've spoken to the owner of the one in Des Moines. And it, we are just wanting to get the definition of animal boarding changed so we are allowed to have cats in our building.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Well, just, I don't know if, I don't really have any questions. I would just wish you well and wish you luck. I come from a family of people that are very fond of cats, and so I have been to the one in Des Moines. And it was, it's very successful. It was a big hit. And so we were, we were excited, and I was happy to, to see this come up. I think we need more options like this in our downtown. So it's always exciting to see new things and breathing life into some of these spaces. So thank you for doing that. The only other thing that I would mention in your, in your recommendation or in your application, you put that you plan on working with the Humane Society as well as Noah's Hope. I would just, as a representative of the city, just ask that you also consider animal rescue as well as adoption and control. I think that they do a great job down there and really would need some help to adopting out cats especially. So anything you can to work with all of those agencies, I would really, really appreciate that.
We actually did add them to our, we called them on Friday, and they agreed to.
Good.
Help us.
That's great news.
Get more cats adopted.
I have a question for you. And this is a good write-up by staff that you had said that you'd have fifteen to thirty cats. What I, my question for you, because the way the ordinance is now written and the way it would be amended, is you can have an unlimited number. Would you be opposed to having a condition on the, on the operation so that it would limit the number of cats?
Yes. Most of the Cat Cafes I've been to have around like twenty to thirty cats in there. And our space that we're going to be having the cats in is about eight hundred to nine hundred square feet. So we definitely don't want to have too many cats in there.
So you'd be open to having a condition like that? Okay, thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the other question I ask Mr. Hanson and Jess, I don't know if you've had a chance to visit with Jeff, but would be to defer this just long enough to get the input from Downtown Partners? Because this, this will affect the entire downtown area, correct?
Correct. Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. I did speak with Reagan Cody with Downtown Partners this morning after our phone conversation, and she had not had an opportunity to review the text amendment. She was aware of the project and the specifics of this location. And she has agreed to present it to their Downtown Working Committee. And I explained to her that we didn't expect to have an answer today. But if we just do first reading, she'll have us something by the middle of this week.
Oh, so we have three, it is three reading?
Correct.
Yes.
So I anticipate a response from her and her group by the middle of this week.
Okay, because, so then the second and third readings would come up a week from the day of the twentieth, and that will be our last meeting of.
That's correct.
Year. So we'll be able to get this decided. Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
Chris, I had a couple of questions. One, and Jeff, you might, I got a little confused, easy for me to do. When you talk about changing the code stating animal boarding and breeding would still be prohibited downtown. But however, in the next paragraph, it talks about the cats will stay there all the time, even overnight. So how does that, how do you regulate? It's, boarding is prohibited, but yet they're going to stay all night.
First, Matt in City Planning. That's the issue that's being changed. So under the current definition of animal mording is to keep animals to board and also to breed. So what we're asking to remove is the word kept, literally just changing one word within the definition. So that would allow the animals to be kept there. But as a customer, I would not be able to take my animals to board there for a weekend or.
Okay.
Amount of time.
And the other thought I had was, and it kind of goes along with your Downtown Partners and, and asking for their view is the Bluebirds, is that right? Bluebirds Flats?
Flats, yeah.
Do they know there's going to be this in the entryway to their building?
I would leave that up to the petitioner. I'm assuming they're negotiating the lease with the landlord. Our text amendment does not require us to notice the tenants.
Okay.
And so I would defer to the business owner to answer that question.
Have you spoken to Bluebird Flats, and they're okay with this?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure we weren't starting something, but.
Have you been able to finalize your lease? Are you getting close to that?
We are getting close, yes.
Subject to the text amendment being made?
Yeah, it is contingent on whether the.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Chris, procedurally, how would we, how would we add a condition of, of a maximum number on, on this facility?
You would add that to the, sure, on this, removing it from the definition of animal boarding, adding that to that definition wouldn't accomplish that. You would almost have to change the definition of commercial retail because it's how we would interpret the use now. Because we would still view it as a retail coffee shop. So we'd almost have to add a new definition that would then limit the number.
I think the other challenge would be is we wouldn't want to set that number without knowing the square footage. So in this case, the petitioner stated eight hundred to nine hundred approximate square footage. That number may be different than a Cat Cafe that has three hundred or four hundred square feet.
Correct.
So we'd want to analyze what that could look like based on the square footage. Maybe it's a range. But I agree with Chris, we would want to look, maybe during this first reading process, we'll have some time to look at it before it comes back next week with a proposal.
Anyone else? The hearing is closed.
Thanks, gentlemen.
And this is first reading only.
And just so you know, Megan, then that means that we, presumably.
Passes four to zero.
Passed it today, but then it will come back next week for another reading to hopefully work out some of those changes, just so you know.
Fifteen's an ordinance amending chapter twelve point one. Two of the waterworks of municipal code, obviously, twenty twenty-two water rates for South Sioux City and Dakota Dunes, first consideration approved December sixth, two thousand twenty-one. I'll move second reading, but I got questions.
Second?
How come? How come, you know, you can come up with that explanation, but it makes no sense to the average layman like me out here paying my water bill every month, dropping one off, it seems like every Monday for the different things, that Salsu can go down, but yet I can't go down? That doesn't make sense to me.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Brad Pitts, Utilities Director. The, the rates for their customers for each community are not decreasing. It's just the rate.
Well, you don't know what they're going to do. They have the right to lower the rates if we lower their rates. So, you're, so why are we, we don't control their rates.
Correct.
So, what, you can't stand there today and make that statement that they're not going to, other than that they may have told you that. But even at that, that still makes no sense. I mean, I read your email to that guy, but that, you can't control what Salsu does with their water or whoever else you're selling it to. That, you don't have that, we don't have that in our agreement with them.
That's correct. And I think, I thought I stated that clearly to him that we do not set their rates.
Right.
We only set what we charge them based off of the formula that was.
But how can they go down? And I know it's because it's based just on the, on the supposedly operational cost of our water plant. But why are, I guess our, I might be, I don't know, but I'm guessing our rates in the city are going to go up and there is no 22,000 rate payers living in Sioux City that will understand how theirs went down and ours are going to go up.
I don't disagree with that. All we can do is calculate based on the agreement, the current agreements.
Well, you got to look at that agreement because this is foolishness that, that we have an agreement that somehow they can go down and we go up, because we're not, we still got to furnish the pipe to get it to them.
All of, all of those aspects are taken into account in the agreement. We've already started agreements with Dakota Dunes to look at potential changes in the future, possibly as early as this coming next year. We likely have done the same thing with Salsu, or we will do the same thing with Salsu.
Well, I'd like to just not, I mean, what happens if we don't agree to this?
I would defer that to legal.
Sure, there's an existing agreement in place, so we're bound by the terms related to that.
Well, they could be bound to find water somewhere else for all I care. I don't really care. So, it's just difficult to explain this. It just doesn't even make any sense to, other than you and Nicole and obviously some council members that'll vote for it, but it doesn't make sense to the average person that's walking in here to pay a water bill. So, that's a horrible agreement if that's the case. I would say that, can't blame you, you haven't been here long enough, but it's just, it's another one of those deals, so.
But I think the thought, Brad, right, is just that you follow the formula regardless of how it fluctuates and that's why we had to negotiate, or that's why we had those meetings with them to say, how can we make this work for everyone? And that way, we're objective in that, you know what I mean? Whatever is entered into the formula is calculated. I mean, I'm frustrated as well paying, you know, if my rates are going to increase, but in order to have a community agreement and community partnership, you have to agree how that's calculated and then follow it once it performs its calculation. Is that kind of right?
Yeah, that's, that's what we do. And like I said, we're, we're in discussions with Dakota Dunes now and we'll move forward as we can, but for now, we make the calculation based on the, on the water service agreements and the calculation is what it is right now, so.
So, it's not individually calculated for those cities' payers.
No.
Sold to the city.
Correct. They set the rates.
They set the rates, but, but they have some, something to do on their end of things too, don't they, to get the water to the residences and commercial properties?
Yeah, there's a master meter building for each community that the water travels through. Once the water meets that meter, hits that meter, it's their responsibility. They can do as they wish with the water at that point.
That would affect their rates, the other cities' rates, what they do with that water when it comes through the.
Well, it all would be up to the city, because the city could be like, well, we're going to charge more here or charge less here and take it out of the budget here and put it there, right? I mean, it would be up to them of how they pay for it or.
Right.
But going way back, when we did these agreements, we made sure that we said they could never charge less for their water than what we're charging for an equal customer because we're not going to compete against ourselves in economic development. Is that still the case?
Yes, it is.
At least that's good.
Can you say that again for me? Because I want to.
When we made this agreement originally, I was around here and we said, we'll sell you water, but you will never get to sell your citizens water cheaper than what Sioux City charges for like a packing house, for instance. They can't charge a lesser rate for the same type of user, or we're competing against ourselves for economic development.
Exactly. But you're saying the agreement does provide for that?
No, the agreement says that, yeah, it protects Sioux City and it says that they are not allowed to sell the water that we sell them for less than the agreement calculation.
But it doesn't specify that as far as, the reason it fluctuates is how much we charge them, not the user, which is the difference in this.
Right.
How long is this contract good for, Brad?
A while. I think Dakota Dunes is expiring in 2034 and I don't recall on Salsu's. Salsu's may be a touch earlier than that.
Certainly, the two entities must have an understanding that this shouldn't be the way that it is and it's time to renegotiate. Or is it?
Both communities have to agree.
Yeah, but I mean, you're already talking to.
Right.
Dakota Dunes.
Right.
Yeah.
Just like we did with wastewater.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Passes three to one. Let's go on to 17 is a resolution approving a letter agreement with, I'm sorry.
16.
16 is an ordinance fixing the boundaries of the Sioux City corporate limits and the voting precincts and repealing ordinance number 2011075. I'll move that.
Second.
Anyone to be heard?
Yes, I had some questions.
Mine is only lighting up with Nate. Did you clear that last one?
I hadn't. I'm still, I wanted to make sure you only wanted to do the second reading on the water rate.
I did.
Okay. I'll move on then. I just wanted to make sure before.
Good afternoon. So, I believe, did Jeff pass along my email with some of those concerns? Were you able to look at that?
Yeah, I was. We have been working on this in a very expedited manner for about a month. When we, last time we went through this in 2011, we were finishing these up in September, but because of the various legislature, we got started late. Didn't get started till mid-August or mid-November. As far as the details of the email, you know, any, there's, there's enough regulations that have to be met that it's any, no two people are going to come up the same boundaries for the same districts. I looked at Steve's comments. I was a little concerned. I think there was some misinformation. He was talking about precinct five, which is Crescent Park area and somehow tied that to voting in Riverside. But aside from that, most of his concerns had to do with polling places.
Yeah.
And voting. This has nothing to do with that. That is strictly the call of the county auditor. He just, he create, he figures out where the polling places are and that's strictly his bailiwick. We did work closely together on coming up with these boundaries for the precinct. In fact, I think Pat probably drew more of the lines than I did, but we were very close and came to an agreement on all of them. They meet all the requirements. And as you note in your packet, Pat sent a letter on saying that he supported what we have. So, I think we have a good precincting plan. It can be disagreed with, but I think we have a good one that should be approved and I, that's all I can say.
Yeah. No, I understand. For the rest of council, in case they weren't contacted, I was contacted by Steve Warnstat that just raised some concerns. It was more about polling locations due to the redrawing of these lines and kind of where people would be included. His concern was that, and he gave two instances of where people normally would be polling and it would be close. It would be in their neighborhood where they would be able to vote and due to shifting lines now, they would have to travel quite a ways to be able to get to where they would be voting in their precincts. So, I mean, I understand Pat's, you know, that situation, that it's like, well, you can change the polling location then.
Yes.
And be able to adjust where that is, but then that becomes a challenge in itself because then people don't check their mail about where they're supposed to be polling, so they go to where they have polled for X number of years and, and I think there's that educational component of it as well. I just don't want to inconvenience voters more than they already have due to this legislature.
Well, that was, well, one of the rules we followed, had to follow in bringing this up was that voter convenience must be considered.
Yeah.
And electoral, electoral efficiency must be considered. Pat's got a limited number of voting machines.
Right.
And two of the, the two precincts he was referring to, the Riverside one and the one right next to it, we're running up against, another rule is you can't exceed 3,500 people per precinct and we're running up against that limit. In the case of the one, we have 3,482 people in there. We can't move much around. I think we have a good, a good precincting plan. I can't address where the polling places are going to be and.
Yeah.
I.
Yeah, we don't know, because that could shift too. I guess that's a good point.
Usually, they end up trying to vote in schools. There's been some issues with that, but.
No. No, I understand.
But that's his call.
I think it's a fair explanation. I just want to make sure that those concerns were raised and addressed.
I, we talked before the meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Welcome. And I, if you'd like, I can have, Pat's not in for a couple of days, but I can have him, see if he wants to come and address the council on polling places, if you'd like.
I mean, I, I trust Pat's judgment, you know what I mean, on that? I just want to make sure that we're taking that into consideration. It was just brought to my attention that we don't want to, yeah, we don't want to.
Trust me, we are.
Yes.
We did, we did, to the best of our abilities.
Oh, I understand. I trust you. I trust you and I trust Pat's judgment as well and appreciated his letter and both of your efforts or all of your efforts to arrive at this, because I'm sure it was a lot of negotiating and trying to figure out ways to make it work. I just, yeah, I just thought it was a fair concern. But that's all I have.
Passes four to zero. Anybody opposed waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I don't think we can, right? I mean, if Pat wanted to talk about, yeah, you're on a truncated time.
So, you don't want to waive the statutory rule?
No, I'm okay with waiving it.
Okay. I'll move that.
Second.
Scott.
Hi.
Waters.
Hi.
Greckin.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Passes four, zero, 17 is a resolution approving a letter agreement with Plymouth County for the creation of a combined township and city voting precinct 15. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes four, zero, 18 is a resolution approving a letter agreement with Woodbury County for the creation of a combined township and city voting precinct 28. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes four, zero, 19 is a resolution approving a letter agreement with Woodbury County for the creation of a combined township and city voting precinct 29. I'll move it.
Second.
Passes four, zero, 20 is a resolution approving a letter agreement with Woodbury County for the creation of a combined township and city precinct 17. I'll move it.
Second.
Passes four, zero, 21 is a resolution approving an amendment and restated city nepotism policy to include personal relationships in the workplace. Before I move that.
Thank you, council member.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Again, I apologize. I'm, I'm just glad to be here today. So, give me the, I know that some of the union reps would like this to be delayed for a week. Tell me what the significance of this is and how it changes what you had before.
Chanel Bertrand, Human Resources Director. The city previously had two separate policies, a nepotism policy and a personal relationships in the workplace policy that were several years old. Because of some, I guess, issues that had happened and the, how old the policies were, we updated the policies and combined them into one. We provided more definitions in the current policy than what the previous two had. We provide some flexibility with our employees and potential employees as well as some flexibility with management if there is a covered relationship that will be happening in the workplace.
Okay. So, would you have a problem if we deferred this for a week and, and met with the union groups to make sure that they understand all that's going on here?
I don't have a problem. I have met with them, but I have no problem.
They feel like there's still some concerns, so I'd move we defer for one week.
Second.
Thank you.
Waters.
Hi.
Greckin.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi. 22 is a resolution approving the reallocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to provide for an employee incentive, not a bonus, an employee incentive for going and working in some rather difficult situations, and I'll move that.
Second.
Mayor, would you like me to make a couple of comments?
Yes, you may.
Okay. As part of the American Recovery Plan Act funds, one of the designated areas where these fundings could be used is for premium pay for essential city workers. Through, at the beginning of the COVID pandemic, we identified just about our entire workforce as essential, whether it be water service workers that are out in the field, sewer workers, customer service representatives, housing, of course, our police and fire and EMS groups. At the request of the mayor, we were asked to look at being able to provide a level of premium pay or, as we're calling it, incentive to all employees to recognize the fact that we didn't close our operation at any point during or continuing in the pandemic and we did our best to maintain services at, at an equal level as, as to prior. This would be a $300 payment, a single payment that recognizes the extra effort that those employees have done and would come from employee recovery funds. Should we find out later that not all employees met, we still don't have a final rule, what an essential worker in the eyes of the federal government is, should at some point we find out that some employees wouldn't be eligible, we would pay for them out of non-ARPA funds. We feel it's important that everyone be recognized and we not single out, single groups when you take a look at the extra efforts that all employees have done.
And it should be mentioned as well that these American Rescue funds cannot be used at any discretion or will of the council or city staff. It's pretty, pretty direct, the buckets and the different areas in which we can spend those. It's pretty, pretty direct, the buckets and the different areas in which we can spend those funds. And so this is one of those categories that was allowed. And we saw an opportunity to thank those men and women that are working on our behalf and keeping our city going.
Yes, under the, under the guidelines, up to $13 an hour could have been paid to employees. This equates to about 14 cents per hour if you look at it at a 2080 hour year. So a nominal way to, to reflect the impact that our employees had on the city during the pandemic.
Let's be clear, the council is not an essential worker, so we will not be receiving if I don't.
That is correct.
Anyone to believe that.
Thanks, Bob.
Passes four to zero. Twenty three, the resolution authorizing a 28E agreement for medical emergency response services with South Sioux City. Again, Bob, I'm going to move we defer that so you can have some time to make sure we're all on the same page, if that's all right.
Second.
Breckin.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Waters.
Hi.
Twenty four, the resolution authorizing payment to Westland Property Management Development for wayfinding sign bases deferred from December sixth, 2021. I'll move that.
Second.
Somebody tell me why it was deferred.
Yeah, so what I was looking into was if there was an opportunity to kind of remedy the situation. They had been put in, I'm sure you've noticed them all around the city. And they're skewed at an angle. In some areas, it can actually be deceiving of the angle or area it's pointing to. And so I asked. Because it was my understanding that a member of city staff, a member of city staff as well as Reagan Cody with Downtown Partners. Had spoke with the people installing them and requested them to change that angle or make sure that it was accurate. And what we wanted and. I think that direction was taken with some of the signs, but not all of them. And then we checked with the company that did the design of them, Corbin Design. And they said that they thought it should be exactly perpendicular to the street, which they are far from. And so we, I just wanted before we awarded full payment to do our due diligence and say, can we hold them accountable to help us? Change the angle of these signs and I'm finding that we cannot. I'm told that city staff is trying to find a way now to try and alleviate. The concerns that we have with some of the most egregious or some of the ones that are angled more than others. Obviously, we might not be able to afford or want to pay to fix all of them that are a little bit off, but just kind of watch that angle. Because I think it's something that's going to be in our community for a long time and it looks great. I just don't want them directing, misdirecting people to different places.
And why, why would we not be able to hold them accountable to the.
Because it wasn't specified in the.
Contract documents didn't have an orientation in them. This is, well, like I said last, oh, Dave Carney, Public Works Director. While I discussed last week, this was kind of one of the things where it was, we paid one person to manufacture the signs. We had turned around, had to pay someone else to put the bases in. We did the installation ourselves, so it was kind of a convoluted mess of. Trying to get it done and then. Documents that were, were. Put together by Corbin didn't identify an orientation in anywhere in their documents. And our sign personnel said, hey, put our traffic signs are usually put in at a bit of an angle. They all, that's how they install them. They're never really perpendicular to the roadway or parallel with the roadway. Was what their opinion was. And they did try to get them, they thought the first, after the first couple, they were too much. They asked them to turn them more and more, they just kept. And the problem was is it's hard for when the guy's putting the base in, he's just looking at a bolt pattern. You're not really seeing the orientation of the sign to our, our guys who were coming later and putting the sign in. It wasn't one company that was just doing it. It's, it's why we don't like to do projects this way. And it was all because we tried to stay within the budget that was allotted.
Dave, have there, have there been a number of complaints that you know of?
No, we've had a few. I mean, people, people that are, that are familiar with the project, I think are more critical of it than, than the people that are seeing it. We've actually seen a lot of compliments on the project. We are working with ASI and I exchanged in phone calls with them last week about if we could get new bases fabricated where we'd be able to just pick it up. Swap out the, the, the bolt, the base with its bolt pattern and slightly turn to give them, to turn them a little bit more. That would probably, Corbin said that'd be the least expensive option. So we're looking into that. You know, they had talked about us taking them down and redrilling the bolt pattern. Kurt Frank doesn't think that's a good idea. I mean, it'd be very difficult to do, plus it'd be very labor intensive. It was very labor intensive for his guys to put them up. They were kind of beyond the scope of what our guys really. Eyes of those signs.
Yeah, and I think it's a great project and I appreciate your team willing to help in this way. It was just frustrating to me that I know a lot of work was done into that and this was just one of the things that we kind of missed. That's what it was, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Did you show the vote?
There we go.
Passes four zero. Presentation of the Sioux City supplements to the Sioux DAS standard specifications and design manual.
So we want to give you a present, Dave Carney, Public Works Director, we want to give you a presentation tonight about the, our updating of our supplement that we try to do at least every other year. We're going to go through some of the changes that were made, the substantial changes. You were given a document that showed all the changes that were made to it. A lot of them, there was a lot of housekeeping issues that were done. I'll go over the design section of it and Gordon's going to tackle the, the specification section of it. Okay, the first thing is stormwater detention. Added some, a table defining the Sioux City requirements as far as our allowable discharge. We are going to go do a standard allowable discharge rate. We also added in using what's called the simplified method for detention that allow. Developers or their consultants to come up with a standardized, more easily reviewed method of design on these basins. They don't, they're going to be required to use it, but it is probably, it's a very simple way of doing it and coming up with the design. Shortcut that. Something that has, has been missing and we need to address is the fact that. Our stormwater management basins have to have a water quality component to it. That's required on our MS four permit. We are, I would say substantially behind in making sure that's done. So we've set standards for that as far as that the first half inch of runoff of impervious surface got, must be retained. We are giving an option on how they can. Have that water retained and giving it a way to get out if the soil surf, the subsurface soil isn't drainable. They can come up with their own method, but they will have to find a way to retain that first half inch of runoff off of their hard surface. To pick up the first, what we call the first flush that's going to get all the debris, you know, minor stuff that parking lots that needs to not be going down our, our rivers. This is more language regarding that as far as the retaining the first half.
Which is not dissimilar to other communities, even our neighbors, right?
No. I understand. We are, we are an MS four community, South Sioux is not an MS four community. Go to dunes.
So you can't compare apples to apples, but I'm just. I understand.
Sergeant Bluff is wrapped into our MS four permit because of, they are contiguous, because there's a state border between, this is my understanding.
Yeah.
Because there's a state border between us and South Sioux and North Sioux. They are not considered as being contiguous to us. Kind of ridiculous, but they are, that's how, that's how it works. Next slide. That we modified the pavement thickness requirements based on our conversations we had during the El Creek development. So we are removing on local service streets, the requirement for the. Sub drains. And. They will be required to provide a, a pavement design and a review of the subsoil surface. So they can accurately determine if the thickness needs to be thicker than what our minimums are. And we added the component that was asked for about steep streets. So we, and this is the only part that's somewhat arbitrary and, and if someone wants to. Is we set that at seven percent since our maximum street grade is 10%. Line steep as being anything greater than seven, that would then require. Sub base, sub drains. Understanding on our local, on our, our city projects for reconstructions, we are putting sub base and sub drains on everything. Next slide.
Putting in conduit for fiber too.
Putting in conduit for fiber. This is, this is talking about the seven percent grade, so unless there's. Go to the next one. The other thing is public utility easements. Our current standard said, I think, said 20 feet. We're actually still using two times the depth. We're finding that even two times the depth is difficult for us to find to be able to work in. So we are changing that to two times the depth plus 10 feet. And that should give us enough room to operate. These are for like side yard utilities that have to be run, whether it be a storm sewer, sanitary sewer, water main. I mean, water main would fit at 20 foot because it's typically five foot deep, so two times the depth plus 10. But you start to get to a deep sewer, we need more room or we are not going to be able to excavate down to that safely. And I'll pass this off to Gordon.
So the supplemental specification updates, that's more for the construction end of it. So first thing, we, we talked to CTS. They noticed we had some holes in our supplement that don't retain, that didn't address soils that we have here such as the lean clays, silts and the fat clays. We used to have them in there. They were taken out in 2017 update. We're putting them back in. Same thing with the, what was the next one? Next slide. Oh yeah, for the concrete testing and for the HMA testing. Those were taken out during the last supplement, 2020, so we're just putting it back. So it's more regulated for the testing periods and intervals. Nothing to, nothing major on that. Next slide. We are requiring, in writing now for contractors to provide the progress schedule. Because due to liquidated damages, want them to identify they are prevailing, not prevailing, but they're. Controlling item, thank you, I'm sorry. Controlling item so that when they're out there working on a sidewalk, we're not charging them an extra day if, if the contract, unless that's the last thing that's on there. So if it's water main, then that would be a controlling item. So we want to make sure that they have the same, the progress schedule into us at the beginning of the project.
That way we can better go after them if there are delays, unnecessary delays or whatever.
Go after them, but to identify the controlling items and know what their schedule is, so we know what's going to go on.
Correct.
When this project, what the schedule is. List of pavement deficiencies and suggestions on how they should be addressed. We adopted this, we're attempting to adopt the same ones that he uses so that we're all on the same page. And we're using the same regulations and criteria that he uses, we'll use on our project. Same for everybody. So there's no question on it. And then we, we also highlighted the high build pavement markings. Haven't been on there before and we want to make sure we get the right pavement markings. Additional updates? Yes, oh, we updated some figures and details also. Like the water service shut off in paving or sidewalks. Detailed the design so that when people have to put a shut off, water shut off in the pavement such as the sidewalk. That if there's frost, if there's frost, when there's frost, that when it heaves, that it won't adversely affect that. We updated the cross section. Sidewalks when they're next to building entrances require insulation under there so that it won't heave. And prevent the doors from opening or trip hazards. Also, we highlighted whenever they have to put a conduit or precast handholds in sidewalks, we also want those insulated under there so that they. They don't, the sidewalk doesn't move along with the box. And we updated the standard utility, you know, cross section.
Sounds good.
All right, well, we'll see how it works, but you've written this by contractors, developers and engineers.
We invited.
I don't want to have two months from now, somebody say, we don't even know what you're talking about.
We invited contractors and, and engineers and we had very little turnout.
I was going to say, you shared in your public works meeting how frustrated they were that they reached out multiple times and weren't hearing back.
Okay, well, then they'll be the ones that have the problem, I guess, but.
Yeah.
Did you send it all to them?
We, we sent it to, we had. DGR, JEO. McClure. McClure and.
Earnhardt.
Earnhardt, which is true engineering on the design side. CTS, Salzback's, oh, and, oh, and also.
RP, yeah.
Uh, CEC on the designs back for the, for the specifications. It was Ryan Callahan, John Salzback, CTS and Butch with Albonetius.
Well, Albonetius, yeah.
You didn't send us a survey call?
No, we didn't.
Stand that, but okay, what else we got here? I got, go back to my, I was going to vacate the.
Thank you, Dave, thank you, Gordon.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Citizen concerns, are there any citizens that want to be heard? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Leonard Craker, 2507 South Lion. I am the current president of Sioux City Professional Firefrighters Local Seven. And I should have come up earlier during the resolution, but I want to take this time, Mr. Mayor and Council, to thank you for your recognition. I, I know Mr. Padmore said that it didn't amount to a lot when it came to an hourly wage. But as you know, most of our members do not join this profession for the money. They, they join it for the service to the community. Chief Everett will tell you during this time, these last couple of years. We have not lessened our service to the community at all. In fact, we've increased our service to the community. We've done that all while some of our members have contracted COVID, one of them ending up in the ICU. And during that time, we have continued. In fact, as Chief Everett will tell you, this year, we are going to go over 10,000 runs for the first time. So we have continued to do our service to the community. And it's not about the money that you guys are offering us, but it's about the recognition. And so I'd like to thank you very much for giving us that recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome, Lenny. Thanks for all you do. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Justin Johnston. I've lived here my whole life. I'm an advocate for people of disability. Some of you know me for my years of advocacy. I'm here today in part for myself and for other people of disability that live in the downtown area. I know you guys are strongly aware of the incidences and issues with people of homeless. I myself am speaking right now for myself. Because within the past two weeks, I've had three incidences with homeless people. And on Friday, myself, I was assaulted by two people. And when I tried to restrain them, one of them started to do the, I can't breathe. When I had them in the chokehold, I was yelling for assistance. And nobody came. When I let him go after he said he couldn't breathe, I was beaten in the back of the head about five or six times. I had to go to the hospital. I was able to get a resident. When I got out of the alley to drive me to the police station, they probably have it all on video. Because they also took my cell phone, several items from me. So I couldn't contact the police. I actually followed them. I have video and names of the people who assaulted me. I tried to speak with the police about it. At one point, they were telling me. That they may have to give me a ticket. Because I antagonized the fight, because I tried to get a photo of the people. It all originated in our apartment building where we've had over a year now. Several issues with the homeless people sleeping in our stairways. Eating in our main floor area. And every time any other tenant beside my. And every time any other tenant beside myself tried to ask them to leave, they tried to do things and assault us. We're not sure what to do at this point, that's why I am taking it upon myself as also the advocate, that a lot of us are not feeling safe. I also have to walk several of the older people that live in our building to check their mail, because they're scared to do it after 6 o'clock. Even as having over 11 cases reported with the police, now at this point, if we call and let them aware or know of what's going on, it takes up to 40 minutes for the police to even arrive, because they've even said to us they can't come running all the time, and that it's not really severe. The only reason I'm bringing it at this point, being on the advisory council with brain injury, and also vice chairman with the state of Iowa and the Civil Rights Commission, a lot of people are not feeling safe in the downtown area, not just our apartment building, but other complexes. So if someone doesn't come up and start bringing the attention to you, that it is a little more severe than what's going on, I wasn't sure what else to do. So that's why I'm just letting you know, I can give you more detail, but I don't want to be here.
Let us visit with our staff and see what we can find out.
Okay.
Alrighty, thank you.
Did you leave copies of those with the staff?
If you guys would like copies of cases, but they were going to charge me $10 for every copy.
We can get those.
We can get those.
I could leave copies if you guys would like.
Yeah, just leave that with us.
Thank you, anyone else? Council?
I was going to ask Nicole, I don't know why it attracted my attention reading the homework this time, but for the liquor violations, the penalty for the individual who sells to a minor is $967.50. And if you throw in the surcharge and the cost, it totals $1,167.63. Just seems to me, and I might be wrong, probably, but it's rather punitive. Who sets the fines? Is that the state of Iowa, is that a?
Yes, it's set by the state of Iowa, and the judges have some discretion as to what they charge for the base charge within the.
Boy, that, I think a lesson could be learned at $500, I'm not sure it takes $1,100, but I don't know if there's a way to, I mean, it hasn't stopped people selling, and that's the goal, but I would venture a guess, most of them probably don't have the money to pay the fine, they get plenty of time to pay it, but is there anything, if, I don't know if anybody else thinks, maybe we don't think it's punitive.
I think that's ridiculous compared to the person that owns the establishment gets.
$500.
Yeah, three or five.
That makes no sense. Maybe we could swap the two or something, I don't know if we need the legislature to get involved, I guess. Is this in their fines compendium that they have that?
I don't believe it's in the compendium, but it is a fine set in the code for the liquor violations specifically.
I just thought I'd share that, I don't, it just seems like it's a little bit unfair, but I think they could learn with a much less fine. And if not, fine goes up the second time, but that's all I have.
All right. Alex?
Yeah, the only thing I had was actually, I wanted to point out lots of concerts and big things, there's been a lot of action at the, especially the Orpheum and some of the Tyson Event Center here as of late, we got two big concerts coming up Thursday, Friday, we have Sarah Evans and Home Free on Friday, so if you haven't gotten your tickets yet, get those. The other thing I wanted to bring to Council's attention is this Thursday, the 16th, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM, there are going to be presentations for Project Sioux Land. So Project Sioux Land, you might recall is that, well, it's a class that I, that I helped kind of coordinate or work with at Morningside University, and what they do is it's college students that get together for more project-based learning, and so they partner with organizations, nonprofits, companies, businesses all over our community to address a need or to talk with them and try to problem solve or address something. And so it's the presentations, they've done a lot of research, and will be presenting their findings to those area partners. And so that is this Thursday at 3:00 PM in Wicker Auditorium on the campus of Morningside University. So if, if any of you are able to attend, I would just, I would encourage you to do so, it's great hearing kind of the findings that they've had and, and seeing their collaboration with community partners, so. So it's an exciting thing as well, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Dan?
As I mentioned earlier in the meeting, next week, next Monday, the 20th, is our last meeting of the council for the year. So hopefully we'll be able to handle all the business before the year end. And then secondly, Mr. Gretkin, I will see you tomorrow afternoon.
Thank you.
Between 4:00 and 6:00 at the Sioux Land Expo Center as we celebrate Pete's many years of service to the city of Sioux City, more than just the eight years on the city council, but on the police department, 40.
It was a month short of 38 years.
38 years, so.
But we'll round up for you.
Listen, it's, trust me, they got a lot of time out of me, but I would tell you now, and I'll probably tell you next week, that it's been an honor and a privilege to be, to be a member of the city council and to be employed by the city for as long as I have. And I, I know when I first got involved with city government, I thought to myself, you know, I want to be surrounded by good people, and, and it just doesn't make any sense not to. And I'm telling you, as far as I'm concerned, the city is a great organization, the people are great people. Never once, when I was across the street, did they fail to help us when we needed it. Never once do the department stop up now when we need it, you know, they're step up now to do it. So I just, it's been great, I'm trying to figure out mostly how it got to my age, but, and now with a 50-year-old daughter, don't tell her I said that, public forums, she'll, I'm thinking, man, time has really flown by, but it's been a great relationship, and thanks for mentioning that, and I look forward to seeing people.
It, it has, and it's been my pleasure to serve with you.
Thank you.
It's been my pleasure to run for office with you. And I just remember the two forums we've appeared at, and we always stuck with ourselves and what we could do for the city. And I greatly appreciated that, Pete.
And I do too, Dan, the group that has been here all along, has just been great to work with, and I appreciate every opportunity.
You're also a good role model for, you and I have disagreed on certain items from time to time, but we move on.
Yep.
I've appreciated that as well, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, we need to go into closed session of the city council to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose performance is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that individual requests a closed session, I'll move that.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Okay, let's go, Alex.